Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our board meeting tonight. We all rise from the public room. My question is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Amanda Lee Paulard.
Trustee Messick.
Here.
Trustee Racco.
Here.
Trustee Sheehan.
Here.
Trustee Cessera.
Here.
Trustee Zora.
Here.
Trustee Walton.
His president.
President DiCipio.
Here.
Former as President, sir.
Thank you, Amanda. We'd like to take this privilege to introduce a guest with us tonight. Mr. Dan Pierce is a fellow lobbyist with our lobbyist Chris Dan Shale. They're driving out tonight to join us tomorrow in Springfield. Mr. Pierce is past mayor of Highland Park, representative of the state of Illinois for 20 years. He's now the president of the Water...
The Water Commission?
North Shore.
North Shore.
Water Commission is in Lake County.
In Lake County.
So, we're pleased to have you. Welcome. Thank you for being here. You have to drive through our office at Cristo, so... Okay, moving on. Our first presentation by our lobbyist, Chris Dan Shale, from the Cabinet Consultant. Chris, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and trustees. If everybody can hear me okay. So, thanks for the opportunity to talk with you guys tonight. Thank you for acknowledging my good friend and fellow lobbyist, Mayor Pierce. I guess, you know, I can't underestimate or understate or overstate the changes that we've experienced in Illinois politics since I was here last, I think about 14 months ago. We've, you know, elected a new governor here in Illinois, Governor Rauner, Bruce Rauner, who really, you know, two years ago, you know, 18 months ago, was a virtually unknown in Illinois politics, sort of well-known by insiders in business, has worked and shared in a lot of civic organizations. But he's brought a whole different, you know, mindset to the state governance that we hadn't seen over the last 12 years with Governor Quinn and, of course, Governor Boyd that was previous to that. You know, the biggest, you know, the biggest concern right now is a global government distributing. And I know I probably talked about this last year, the year before, and the year before that when I reported to you. And we have another threat this year to the income tax revenue sharing program where it's been in place for over 45 years. So, Mayor Pierce was in the state legislature back in the early 70s. And, you know, we've had some serious threats to it in the last few years. Governor Quinn called for cutting it by 30 percent a few years ago. We were able to turn that back. It's been a perennial issue down there in Springfield. Governor Rauner's called for a 50 percent cut in LGDF distributions to municipalities, which in the case of Greenwich Park would be almost $700,000 on the whole in budget. You know, there, you know, I can't again overstate the concern that it'll be for this village and municipalities across the state. There are a few things that are heartening in the current atmosphere. For instance, in March, the legislature passed a fix to the fiscal year '15 budget, which runs through the end of June, which had been frankly underfunded by the General Assembly last spring. I don't know what the anticipation was, if Governor Quinn would get re-elected, if we do the income tax temporary, the tax increase, but for the other. The bottom line is they didn't appropriate enough money for this fiscal year. Governor Rauner faced a real serious challenge when he was inaugurated in January. How were you going to pay for the rest of this year's spending? So, there were a couple of different proposals, and one of the parts of the mixture that was floating around was a roughly 30 to 50 dot million dollar trim of the LGDF for this year, this fiscal year. Now, fortunately, the budget fix they put together in March didn't cut the LGDF, it trimmed the border appeal tax a bit, which is a concern. But I think the persistent voice of officials here and officials across municipal officials across the state helped disabused the decision-makers in Springfield of tapping into the LGDF. So, we're going to be redoubling efforts in the next six weeks on this issue, obviously starting tomorrow when we're down in Springfield. President DiCipio and some of the trustees and manager of CDIO, Emily Roden too will be down there with us. So, we'll have a nice contingent to restate the obvious, it seems the obvious, that you can't cut the LGDF. It's not, it's not the state of Illinois's money. It's the taxpayers of the municipalities across the state who are paying into it. State of Illinois simply collecting the municipality. I think there's this idea that it's some sort of welfare program for towns and villages, and we know that's not the case at all. There was an agreement put together 45 years ago, give or take, when the state brought in the income tax to begin with. Municipalities gave up some taxing powers, you know, personal property tax powers to, you know, kind of a trade-off, if you will. Again, it's municipalities and their taxpayers' money, not the state of Illinois necessarily. So, that's a big challenge. And another, another issue that kind of popped up here in the last couple of weeks is possibly a capital improvement though. It's been six years since we've had an infrastructure investment, the Illinois Jobs Now Act, which was a really good program. It brought a lot of resources to communities across the state, including here in Greenwich Park, where we were able to rehabilitate the public works garage and bringing a parking lot facility to the 31st Street business area, which was sorely needed. And I think those are good, good projects that benefit our community and allow us folks and visitors and shoppers to the Greenwich Park. So, the governor's administration, mainly Illinois Department of Transportation, the Illinois Capital Development Board, set up a series of listening events, soliciting for across the state in anticipation of putting together, I think, hopefully, a capital improvement plan, you know, presenting Governor Rauner with a broad program of investments and infrastructure improvements. Hopefully, it will include the opportunity for local communities to be a participant in this capital improvement again, bringing their priorities to the table. Again, you know, the, the question is how do you pay for it? There's been some talk about earmarking, the sales tax portion of, you know, the sales tax on fuel and gasoline to a capital bill. Right now, that just goes to the general fund, even though it's sales tax on fuel. There's some talk about possibly a pay-as-you-go system, you know, user fee, similar to what they do on the tollway. That's a little bit more of an outlier idea. But, you know, that's what's good, they're going to be talking about the next month, ways to pay for it, too. So, that's, you know, that's, that's heartening. You know, the LGDF is a great concern, but there's some optimism we may get some infrastructure investment here in Illinois. Just a couple of other things we've been working on in the last year. I think especially in the last couple of months, we've dedicated our efforts to try to secure a new ladder truck for the fire department. Chief Magos and Julie Cibio, of course, President DiCipio have been very much involved in trying to secure support for our grant to FEMA through the assistance, assistance to a firefighter's grant program that we're trying to obtain to pay for that, that new, new ladder, Quint, I believe it was called, multi-purpose fire vehicle, chiefly for ladder operations should they arise. We were, we were able to enlist Congressman Quigley to help us, especially, he was here in April for a meeting with village officials and some officials from other communities in the area, and he was very supportive of our efforts. He's contacted FEMA. We've also gotten some support from other legislators. Senator Durbin and Senator Kirk have committed to sending letters, as well as some of our state legislators, including Representative Welsh, Zaleski, and Ford, Sheldon Ford, have committed to helping us out on this. We're waiting with bated breath for the decision, which we believe will come next month, Chief.
Over the next couple of months.
Couple of months, so, and, you know, we'll continue to solicit support from, from our elected officials for this. You know, as I mentioned, the congressman was here in, in early April. We talked about a number of issues, and he graciously stayed around after the luncheon meeting and meet with some constituents who came in over the course of the afternoon. And, you know, I'm looking forward to continuing to building that relationship on behalf of the village. He's, I think, a real up-and-comer in Congress. He's a member of the appropriations committee, which is a key committee. He's on the intelligence committee, which is fascinating to hear some of his stories about some of the briefings they get, as much as he can tell us, obviously, about some of the things that are going on in the intelligence secondary. There's some other things that I think we were able to achieve in the last year was, you know, building some relationships, for instance, with our new county commissioner, Liz Gorman, who because of the redistricting became our county commissioner. Previously, Commissioner Tobolsky served in Greenwich Park. And to her credit, I think she hit the ground running for the village even before she was officially our county commissioner after the November election. In July and August, we got a little surprise from, from the county building about the sheriff wanting to relocate a vehicle facility, a vehicle service facility at the highway department site on 26th Street, 28th Street, on the north, north side of the village. And it was something out of left field, I think, kind of buried some county activity earlier last year. And when we found out about it, Commissioner Gorman really stepped up to the plate to try and bring together some of the various parties involved, the sheriff's office, President Preplingle, her, her staff, they came to meet with us, and I think they came up, they came up with an acceptable accommodation in terms of mitigation, landscaping, security, commitments not to drive up and down residential streets. I think we kind of board the commission deserves a lot of credit for helping us get that done. And I think those were probably some of the highlights. You know, to mention a few things that maybe come up on the, on the horizon, there's some movement in Washington to maybe put a highway bill together, comprehensive five-year highway bill. We haven't had one of those in 10 years now, since 2005. Congressman Quigley again is a leader in that effort, working with our former representative, Congressman LaPence, who's been diligently trying to get that ball rolling, you know, by partisan basis to get, get things back to where we used to be in terms of planning, infrastructure, and highway improvements nationally, since then we've kind of been going from mine to mine with these, you know, two-year stopgap plans, these one-year extensions, fiscal cliff, brimsmanship, kind of thinking the way they do things in Washington. Hopefully, we'll, we'll see some movement towards a more comprehensive program that will include local priorities and highway bill, national highway bill. We used to do, they remember Main Streets as well as the interstate highways, and they're putting these plans together, so hopefully we can get back to that in the future. I think that's, you know, about it for, you know, some of the activities. If there's anything I apologize, you know, I think we've diligently to implement the ID grant that came in 2013 for Downstart Disconnectment Project, the legislative contingent, state legislative contingent help us with. Like I said, if I overlooked any important achievements in the last year, I apologize. So, do we have any questions? Is there anything I can answer for you?
Do you have a trustee's any questions, Chris Dan Shale?
Thank you. We talked about the LGDF, and we'll be going out tomorrow, so I won't go away with it. It's important to note that we made the right call. It's not the state's money. It's our residents, interims, communities, money in all of the states across the state because it's designated for our community. They take the money away, and we could see staff cuts, we could see service cuts, so it's ultimately going to affect all of our efforts. And so, that's a part of the many council here. Would you bring up that was laid out many years ago? Is there any legal issues that could be surfacing with the decision made by the governor to do the, 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 the,[1157.84]
...guys tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, moving on, public participation. Anyone care to address the board? Okay, moving on, consent agenda, Amanda?
I know some of the consent agenda are as follows. A, approval of minutes. Village Board meeting, March 24th, 2015. Work session meeting, April 14th, 2015. Village Board Executive Session, April 14th, 2015. The Action Professional Service Contract, Tedwood Consulting, motion to move to authorize the village manager to execute a one-year contract for services from Tedwood Consulting. C, Action, Village Board Email Policy. Motion to approve the policy of electronic mail communications given from elected officials. D, Action, Zoning Application Number 2015-01, 901 East 24th Street, Brooklyn. Highway Consolidation Variation, Motion to Approve and Ordinance Granting Certain Variations for 901 West 26th Street, Public Hearing Number 2015-01. E, Action, Streets in Macmillan and Cumberland, Cleveland Avenue, 26th and 30th. Motion to award a contract to the lowest bidder, GA Paving LLC, in the amount of $236,961. A, Action, Resolution Approving 2015/2016 Pay Plan. Motion to approve a resolution approving pay plan and schedule of authorized positions for FY 2015/2016. G, Action, Village Pension Funding Policy. Motion to approve the working group's recommended pension funding policy at the April 28th, 2015 Village Board Meeting. H, Action, Motion to Authorize the President and Chairperson of the Finance Committee to sign the Register for Bills and authorize the Treasurer and Village Clerk to sign checks in payment of operating bills and salaries itemized in the tax register. I, Action, Motion to Authorize the Village Treasurer and Village Clerk to sign checks in the payment of payroll and other bills that become due between this date and May 26th, 2015, with subsequent approval of the payroll register and voucher register by the Board of Trustees at its regular meeting to be held on May 26th, 2015.
Thank you, Amanda. My other motion, to who?
To who?
Second.
Any comments from the trustees? See one of them in the call?
Trustee Massick?
Yes.
Trustee Racco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Amanda. Next up to the village manager, Julia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items to report this evening. The first item that I have to report is that today we have received news regarding a vendor of ours regarding the purchase that we had made recently for fire hose. So some time ago, the village board approved the purchase of the fire hose for the village. And the news that we received today is that it is unlikely that we will get received or delivery of this hose this fiscal year. And if that is the case, we will most likely be looking forward a budget and letting it through the board sometime in May or when the hose is delivered. So this is, this is funding debt. It was included in the budget. The money's waiting in the Capital Projects Fund, waiting to be spent. It won't impact any of the projections that are currently in the budget because we anticipated that this money would be spent. It's just that it's not going to occur this fiscal year due to best practices and accounting standards. We really have to tag those money spent to be appropriated. So that is likely to occur. So that was news today. The second item that I wanted to report is a guest meeting that's remaining police pension for the village and new pension funding policy. So I'll make sure that I provided updates for the village. And that's how I approach this.
Thank you, Julia. Okay, Administration Committee, the Assistant Lieutenant of the Trustee Longyear, Trustee Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. On this past Friday, April 24th, the village celebrated National Arbor Day by planting a tree in honor of Mr. James Witt. Mr. Witt was nominated by Mr. Barry Russell for his contribution not only to the village of LaGrange Park but to our country. Mr. Witt is a Vietnam veteran and served on the committee to bring funding to support construction of the new Veterans Memorial at Memorial Park. He spent many years sharing the story of his experience being wounded in combat with the youth of our community. In honor appreciation of his service, a swan pulp tree was planted near Veterans Memorial last week. Side note on it, Mr. President, if I may, quite a few of us in this room attended the event, and that was really nice of Ms. Russell to submit Mr. Witt. I consider Mr. Witt to be a true patriot. Very nice. New water rate effective May 1st. The village board recently approved an 8% increase to the village water rate effective May 1st, 2015. This increase is primarily a pass-through of a rate increase from the village water supplier, the Brookfield North Riverside Water Commission, which purchases water from the city of Chicago. The city of Chicago raised its water rates by 15% effective January 1st of this year. The new village rate will be $6.99 per 100 cubic foot. Most residents are billed quarterly for water and will not see the full impact of the rate increase on their bill until August, September, or October. Questions regarding the water rate should be directed to the village hall at 708-354-0225. Village, Youth Commission, the village is accepting applications from interested teens to serve on the village's youth commission. The youth commission is comprised of ten young people in grades seven through twelve. Commissioners serve one or two-year terms beginning of September of each year. Individuals interested in serving must complete an application and send to the village no later than June 30th. For more information, please visit the village website, www.lagrangepark.org, or call the village hall at 708-354-0225. Moving on, Mr. President, for building and department activities for the March of 2015. Seventy building permits were issued this past March compared to fifty-seven issued in March of 2014. Year-to-date, ten more permits have been issued compared to last year. Estimated construction costs per month were nearly double what they were for March of last year, while permit fees collected were more than double compared to last year. A portion of this increase is due to an increase in fees, but also due to deposit fees required with permanent applications submitted. There were 104 inspections conducted in March compared to 110 last March, of such five went unapproved. During this month, our inspector and village staff met with staff from St. Louis to discuss plans for their annual summer fest. Staff met with the executive director of Park District during the month to discuss the status of planning for improvements to Memorial Park. As you are aware, it appears they are moving forward with replacement of the shelter house, but other projects are on hold due to the state holding up of grant money. As, as part of such, the shelter house was actually demolished on March 31st. During this month, Inspector Rob Elizabeth attended the Suburban Building Officials Conference, Annual Spring Training Institute. As part of such, several training classes were presented over four consecutive Fridays. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Sheehan. Moving on to the Engineering and Capital Projects Committee, Trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three items to report on this evening. On Tuesday, March 3rd, sealed bids were received by the village for the 2015 Sewer Repair Program. On March 24th, the village board authorized a contract for this work with the low responsible bidders for a general construction payment. These repairs will start April and continue into May in order to span two fiscal years. This construction method allows the village to realize the financial benefits of a larger project. No service interruptions to residents are anticipated, and with minor roadway access, interruptions for brief periods typically no longer than several hours. Second item, the Cummins Avenue Reservicing Project from 31st Street to 26th Street appeared on the Illinois Department of Transportation letting on March 6th, 2015. The apparent low bidder was Johnson Paving in the amount of $461,432. This is approximately $50,000 below the original estimate for this work. The village will be responsible for providing 40% of the construction costs. The balance of the construction funding is being provided by IDA. Currently, construction is anticipated commence in early June, with paving completed by the end of summer and land state restoration in early fall. Third item, project plans and specifications have been completed for the repaving of Cleveland Avenue from 30th Street to 26th Street. The project is currently being bid, and the results will be brought back to the village board at the April 14th meeting for consideration. This accelerated approach is being taken due to poor condition of the existing pavement. The second repaving program will follow later this summer, using a combination of revenue funds and motor fuel tax funds. These projects were divided into two programs since the use of motor fuel tax funds require significant involvement by IDA, and has to consider upon a lead time before actual construction can begin. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Casera. Public Safety Committee, Trustee Racco?
Thank you, Mr. President. The total crimes for the police department summary activities from March this year, the total crime reported for the first three months are similar to last year with forty-one thus far in 2015 compared to forty in 2014. There have been nineteen of the forty-one reported crimes cleared in 2015 with twelve arrested round. Overall, police activities lower with fourteen hundred incidents handled by the police department this year compared to sixteen hundred eighty-two during the first three months of 2014. Again, the primary reason for the lower number is due to the police department now responding to basic ambulance assist at Bethlehem Woods. Additionally, traffic enforcement has risen with a total of eight hundred and five citations for arrests to date in 2015 compared to seven hundred and fifty-six of 2014. The Grange Park Police Department leads the way with almost 100% efficiency of less than completion by each of the police officers in the year of 2015. This is in reference to the Computer-Based Police Law Institute Monthly Legal Update Review, which is operated in conjunction by Irma involving sixty-two additional police agencies. The first copy of the chief was held on Thursday, April 23rd. Future meetings will be held on a quarterly basis throughout the year of 2015 in respect to the fire department. The EMS responses for this month is thirty, 136. There have been 395 year-to-date compared to 388 year-to-date in 2014. Fire rescue incidents this month is thirty-two. There have been 111 year-to-date compared to 187 year-to-date in 2014. On Sunday, March 29th, firefighters conducted live fire training in the Park District Shelter House in Memorial Park, which was scheduled for demolition. Several training evolutions, who will conduct evaluation or evolutions, were conducted which involved fire tactics, search, and rescue operations. The event provided some worthwhile education and hands-on experience for all involved. We appreciate the Park District's use of the facility and the patience of the neighbors dealing with us on Sunday morning. EMS staff led by contract coordinator Shelley Carbone worked with the police department to update medical equipment carried in police vehicles. New bags were purchased, and Shelley equipped the new bags with supplies needed to place them in service. During the month, contract firefighter personnel Nico Elfer left contract equipment with PSSI in our village as he was hired in full-time by another municipality. During the month, contract, during the month, fire staff witnessed hydrostatic pressure testing of wires sprinkler system being installed in three D walls in our village. I'd like to quickly say, Mr. President...
Thank you, Trustee Racco. I'm gonna make one comment, then report it all by name.
Yes.
Safe-as-places in Illinois, this is really bothering me. I mean, I thought that Julia maybe get something to do with the life and the doings and... You know, the Grange has received headlines. They, they were, they get it as eighth or tenth or eleventh or something, but in overall scoring, mainly look at it, the Grange is forty-first in the rankings. The Grange Park is seventh, and we make anything in this. And I think that we should stand up, and other good, to let them know that the Grange Park is a safe place, we're seventh, not forty-first. And I think it's important that our community knows that, and they should be proud of that. And if the Grange can give headlines in the sort of life of forty-first ranking, we have certainly be able to settle, so... Julia?
I can just add one additional comment, that we also received word this week that Safewise, which is a national home security company, ranked the Grange Park as one of the top 100 safest cities in the country. So we're not recognized by just one firm, but also by the second. So these are both recognitions that will certainly count for our residents, and that they know that we have this ranking, and you know, how safe our community is.
And I'm not gonna ask you if the neighboring communities were ranked in that bottom.
I, I don't need that attention. I only look at the Grange Park.
And I know that we have a gem, you know, because we've been, been in the paper before when the Tribune came out and did an article on our community, we do have a gem. And I think that our residents need to be proud of that, and communities around us need to know that we are safer in this area, and we should be proud of that. And it should be reflected, we don't have the sort of life and the doings and everything anymore, meetings anymore. Not that I think that they, you know, when there's something going wrong, they may be here. But we don't have that. And I think we should stand up for ourselves and be recognized because it's the work of our fire chief and our case chief and our public registrar, everybody is involved in our village manager, assistant village manager, and certainly the board to get us this ranking. If we get ranked in other rankings before us, where it's a nice community, safe community, and it just, you know, kind of your case, but the other communities get publicity. And I know we want to remain the gem, and we want to be out there as, as everybody rushing for the Grange Park to move, which would be nice, but, but we should be recognized for it. So we'll see what we can do to get in touch with our fellow J.D. Michaels, or, or Julie, and see if we can get something in there. And I'm sorry you're bullish, but, I can see that, you know... Okay, moving on, Public Participation, Trustee Massick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll report for month of March 2015. One hundred ninety regular hours and thirteen hundred six, or fifteen point six to over ten hours were spent on other operations. Hopefully, as the final inner operation for this year. It required either salting, snowfall, or both. There was a total of 287 miles, salted with approximately 61 tons of salt, 213 miles. Wow. Two hundred fifteen regular hours were spent on the maintenance of public work equipment and vehicles. Hundred eighty-seven hours were spent on paddles, using approximately 20 tons of UPM. Hundred seventy-four day shift hours were spent on building and ground maintenance around the public works facility along 31st Street. The streets sweeping over 135 miles during 69 hours and picked up 77 yards of debris. Various work orders were completed with crews removing roadkill, tree trimming, individual brush pickups, and making sign repairs. There were various repairs and preventive maintenance on several public works, police, fire, and building department vehicles. And on to water department operations, there was over 434 day shift hours and 63.47 overtime man-hours during the month of March, done on maintenance and repairs of sewers and water mains. Forty million, 410,000 gallons of water were purchased from Brookfield North Riverside Water Commission. Thirteen hundred thirty-six water meters were read in Section 3. Fifty monthly accounts and nineteen final meter readings were taken. Various inspections, appointments, service calls performed. Fifteen water bacterial samples were taken in all paths. Sixty-nine utility locations were identified for excavation. Three water mains and one service line were repaired, and two buffalo box repairs were made. That concludes my report, Mr. President. There are no action items.
Thank you, Trustee Massick. Moving on to my end, Julia, Trustee Racco?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would report, and the highlights are, fiscal year date general fund revenues are 96% of the annual budget. Revenues are approximately $86,000 lower than this time last year, due in part to unusually large property tax refunds earlier this year. Sales tax revenue continues on a positive trend, with up about 9% from last year. Fiscal year state natural gas taxes also remain significantly higher than prior year. However, telecom communication tax receipts are about 80% lower, which includes reduction due to a nationwide debt and plan loss settlement. If we exclude the temporary reduction, telecom tax receipts are lower by about 10%. Permit revenues are about 90% from last year and about 181% of the annual budget. Intergovernmental revenue is about 2% greater than last year due to increases in the state share bonus tax. Buying revenue is about 13% lower than the prior year, but still near budget expectations. Police department expenditures are greater than last year due to a tiny difference in pension contribution. The public works department expenditures are higher than last year due in part to planned increases in tree trimming and street materials, as well as a change in property and liability insurance allocations. Total general fund expenditures are within expectations of 89% of the annual budget and about 488 billion above last year. Most of the increase is due to the impression 1.2 million budgeted transfer to cash reserves to Capital Projects Fund. Excluding the capital transfer and the pension timing differences, general fund expenditures are approximately 204,000 or about 3.4% above last year as of this time. Based on current projections, the general fund is expected to end fiscal year 2015 in a healthier position than budgeted. Revenues have performed slightly better than expected, and overall expenditures are somewhat lower than budgeted. That concludes my report, but we do have other action items, Mr. President. The first item on the agenda is to approve the matters of fiscal year 2014, 2015 budget. Village policy requires that the village board amend the annual budget. If the department's total expenditures will exceed the improved budget, the village board may amend the budget by a two-thirds vote. Fiscal year 2014, 15, public works department budget requires amending for two reasons. First, although the total annual property liability insurance contribution for the village has decreased, the proportion assigned to the public works is greater than budget due to a change in the recommended allocation from the village's risk and commitment pool. Second, the village board approved the purchase of additional roads sold in order to take advantage of the lower pricing. The total of $57,000 in budget increases for these two public work side items will be entirely offset by reductions in administration and police insurance side items, which are projected to be under budget for the year. Fiscal 2014, 15 sewer fund administration budget requires amending due to 2006 bond refunding. The bond refunding process necessitates the use of legal and financial consultants. The cost of these services will pay the bond proceeds. The proposed budget increases will be offset entirely by reduction in the capital improvements line and sewer fund operation and maintenance budget. I recommend approval of this budget. I move to approve the resolution amending the budget fiscal year 2014, 15 to the village of LaGrange Park.
Your motion is a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, we discussed this also in the work session. And as you can see, that on the following page in the line items, that this is completely, the increase to the public works is completely offset by the decrease in the police and administration. And we just need to make sure that our, we have our Ts crossed and our Is added to the budget, so please take a second approval.
Thank you, Trustee Racco. Any other comments from the board? See another man in the call?
Trustee Massick?
Yes.
Trustee Racco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And another item, which actually, there's three motions attached to this item. So this, what we're talking about is the overview, overview of the Finance Committee's recommendation to the village board for fiscal year 2015, 2016 budget. The Finance Committee met on March 10th, 2015 to review the draft budget and five-year plan. The minutes and notes of questions, the minutes and notes of questions with follow-up related to the committee's discussion are included in the budget binder. As a result of the Finance Committee's discussion, the committee recommends an additional table be added to the budget, it's just not long enough, to illustrate how administrative salaries are distributed between the funds, general fund, water fund, and sewer fund. This change has been included in the April 14th, 2015 draft, as seen Table 6, you see on Page 13. No other changes were recommended by the committee. The action requested was, well, moving versus, a public hearing was held on April 14th at the work session, but prior to the work session at 7:15, and at the end here in the budget five-year plan, on the work session was discussed, and the work session was discussed. And tonight, we are making that motion to approve the resolution approving the fiscal year 2015 operating budget. I think I should take these motions each individually.
Your motion is a second?
Second.
Trustee Racco, any discussion?
Once again, we, just to say this is this right, I think I just wanna mention for those who were not here at the work session, Julia Seo gave us an excellent presentation on the budget presentation. We have to give great thanks to Julia Seo, and great thanks to our Finance Director, Larry Gil, for all the hard work, and also for all the department heads for the hard work on making this budget work and making this understandable for us, and thank you very much for all your hard work and efforts.
Any other comments from the board? Any call the call?
Trustee Massick?
Yes.
Trustee Racco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And the second item motion, upward motion is I move to approve the addition of the new Table 6 Position Cost Allocation Act on Table.
Your motion? Second. Trustee Racco?
Mr. President, I think this table is, I was willing to actually suggest this table, and of course, it was, you know, we all agree, you know, that it's something that I just think that it's another tool that just allows us to better understand the budget as far as the different allocation is, what it comes down to is that the, certain employees, their salaries come from different departments and different funds. So what we want to make sure is that, just wanna see that the employees that, where their salaries come from multiple funds, that it identifies what percentage from each one, so it gives us a better picture of where the salaries are coming from. So...
Great recommendation. Thank you, Trustee Racco. Any other comments? Any call the call?
Trustee Massick?
Yes.
Trustee Racco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And then the third motion attached to this is the motion, I move to approve the five-year plan fiscal year 2015, 16 through 2019, 2020.
Second. Trustee Racco, any question?
Once again, Mr. President, this was discussed at length, and once again, a great presentation was given regarding the five-year plan. As we know, the five-year plan is always, each year, what we have is five years, there may be adjustments or changes each year depending on how the following year went. The five-year plan makes sense, and thank you for all the step on my work.
Any other comments? Any call the call?
Trustee Massick?
Yes.
Trustee Racco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And there's one more item up for approval, Mr. Racco? Mr. Racco?
Really?
To improve sewer rate of .11 cents per cubic foot effective with bill issued after May 1st in order to fund the sewer backup prevention cost share program for the village homeowners. On the background of this, proposed 2015, 16 sewer fund plan includes a 5.2% increase in the village's sewer rate from $2.10 per 100 cubic feet to $2.21 per 100 cubic feet. The additional revenue generated will fund residential sewer backup prevention cost share program. The goal of the program is to encourage homeowners to install additional protection against backup of sewers in their basement during severe rain events. The program will offer homeowners a 50% reimbursement of up to $3,000 to install backflow devices and up to $5,000 to install an overhead sewer system. The proposed rate increase will allow for a total of $50,000 in reimbursement during fiscal year 2015, 2016. The village has not increased its sewer rate since December of 2005, 2005, when the sewer improvements bonds were issued. For a typical family of four, it was in 2,400 cubic feet of water per quarter. The quarterly sewer bill will increase $2.64 from $50.40 to $53.40. The minimum quarterly sewer bill based on 600 cubic feet will include, increase 66 cents from $12.60 to $13.26. Staff recommends approval of the rate increase. And I move to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 15, Chapter 50, Section 50.61 of the village of LaGrange Park Municipal Code as established in wastewater services, service charges.
Second.
Your motion is second, Trustee Racco?
Mr. President, I think this is a great program. As you know, that you can't eliminate water flooding problems, but we can mitigate them after the study was done several years ago. This was one of the ways that we can take efforts to mitigate flooding issues, water problems within people's basements in heavy rains, and it's great that we provide this program, that we allow some type of financial, not incentive, but help assistance, financial systems to install whether it be the overhead sewers or backup, to prevent flooding in people's basements during heavy rain. So it's a great program. It has not been increased...
It has not been increased since two thousand five, so it's a minimal increase for the benefit that we can provide residents.
Thank you, Trusty Rockwell. Any other comments from the board? Trusty Massick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had mentioned this at the work session. I would, I support that, you know, we haven't raised our sewer rates since two thousand five, and I would support an increase, just as a general thing, but I, this program to raise fifty thousand dollars, I'd rather earmark it as something that would help the entire village. This is pretty much, it's, we're aiding home improvement. I do take the flooding issues we have seriously. But this, you know, when we, when we improve a sewer or something, it goes in the public right of way where the whole village gets, takes advantage of it. Here, we're talking, and especially with the amount of money we're earmarking, if you get ten people taking advantage of the backflow of waste water, it, it, I almost, we could almost double the rate and a hundred thousand more in the general funds that would improve sewers and flooding issues. I just don't see the biggest benefit for the amount of money we're raising going into fewer homes. Said there are lower-income people, seniors and such, and those, I don't know if they'd be able to take advantage of it because they would be able to come up with their half. So now we're raising taxes again on everybody for a smaller benefit. I'd like to see something that benefits the larger group. Like I said, and, and Trusty Rockwell used the word incentive and then called back, and I would say it is an incentive, more so than a benefit. It's incentive to some people may be able to afford, but largely, and I feel those people flood, I was one of them, so I moved, and I had these issues always. I wouldn't, I, you know, so I know what it's like, but this is, so this is raising a tax on everybody, every homeowner in the village for the benefit of a smaller group. So I think we could, we can go back and look at raising, you know, if we wanted to raise the rate, and look at other ways to do this. And I know this was in the study, because we were looking at things we can do. So many of the things we have are just catastrophically expensive and the village can't do it. But this doesn't benefit enough people, and I think we're targeted too small to just a few people. So I don't think I could support this.
Trusty Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. At the work session meeting, I believe I was in favor of this, but it was actually pretty interesting because after I went home and started reviewing some of the notes and actually some of my comments, I came to a difference in opinion. I do agree, agree with the rate increase. It has been ten years since we've increased the fees, and, and I think it's, we must always look for new sources of revenue that makes sense for the village and doesn't put a hindrance on any of our, any of our residents and homeowners. I do question the proposed use of the funds at this time, given Mr. Gansha's comments and pieces that we know there are a lot of uncertainties with potential revenue impact from the state and other sources of revenue. And at this time, I think the, the additional funds being put in some sort of reserve manner for potential needs of the village in the future would, would make more sense. I totally agree with, with comments that we must make budget and project decisions that, that may not impact all residents, although I believe these projects are better suited to village infrastructure and other priorities of the village as we put together much of our planning versus the individual homeowner projects and priorities, especially given the current budget, budget currently. How do I improve my home? I think Trusty Massick alluded to it a little bit. We need to make decisions on a constant basis of what priorities we need to, we need to tackle. Anywhere from HVAC to replace my air conditioner, to replace my heater, I need more efficiency while I don't want a capital outlay. Roof, waterproofing. I'm fortunate, I don't live in an area that floods, but with recent rains, we typically get a lot of seepage, and it has been a little bit deeper. So my family, we have to make the decision, do we go to a waterproofing type, type piece? So I think these are constant decisions out there. I love the comments, and I think we always strive to, to make decisions based on what we can do to increase the value of our homes in the, in the village. Anybody that, you know, wants to take up a project of sewer improvement, I really believe they see an immediate value increase in their, in their property. It may not show in a, in a residential appraisal, but I think one of the first questions asked during any home negotiation sale is, does your basement get water? And if it does, and there's not pieces put in place, it usually turns into an ugly negotiating piece with the, with the parties involved. With that said, I definitely do have a strong desire to be able to provide these opportunities. As Trusty Rockwell mentioned, I think it is a great opportunity and a great project. And I think a perfect example is the, the recent opportunity we have with the gutter disconnect and the rain barrel program. Although I think a major difference is the project being funded in large part by a grant in addition to this being a, a village requirement to, for the downspout disconnect. To finish up, like I said, it's a, it would be a great project. I do believe in the funding and revenue increase. However, based on my decision of saying, is this the best use of our funds at this time, I would have to vote no, in that being a, a best use for the village as a whole, but definitely something in better economic times that I think be a great program to offer to our homeowners. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trusty Casera. Any other comments from the board?
I guess I.
Trusty Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. With the discussion at the table tonight, I, I think this may directed more toward attorney keening. So we could vote to accept this as, as far as increasing the tax rate for the sewer fund, but not necessarily the assistance of the resident, am I correct in that assumption or no?
Well, the proposed reason for the increase in the sewer fund budget is to fund fifty thousand dollars in reimbursements for these improvements. So that's an underlying assumption of the sewer rate increase. Yes, and the ordinance too. I think that if, if there's not enough support for the ordinance that's currently on the table, if the, or the issues, they can direct staff to come back with something slightly modified. An increase without the reimbursement or something else.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Trusty Rockwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to follow up. I know I said the word incentive with that, or I started to, the reason why I stopped it is because I don't think that people are having the problems needing incentive when they have this issue of flooding, maybe they're, so that's why I stopped and looked for the proper words, which was financial assistance. But I just, I, I want us to remember that, you know, when there are heavy floods, there are heavy, heavy rains, and we have floods, it's not just one of the people coming up. There's, there's sections of the Grange Park that are, you know, dramatically affected their homes. And so that's why, why we had the study done in the first place, to see what could we do to mitigate the flooding in people's homes and the backup of the sewers in people's homes. And then, as Trusty Casera said, some of these things are just so, the cost is just that we don't have the funds to do it. So this funding, I'll leave, it's fifty thousand dollars as a, allowed, as opposed to the four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar grant that we got from the downspout program. This is fifty thousand dollars that we're putting aside that if, those times when we do have that, you know, heavy flooding and, you know, the, the, the people, residents who get impacted, that we can at least provide them some kind of financial assistance in terms of what they can do, even though it's more, it's more than just home improvement and regular housing. Because this, this is why we, even perhaps is pointing at trust in this, because this was a big problem in the village, and it continues to be a problem in the village in, in certain sections where the flooding occurs. So even though it's not happening now and we're all sitting there, I, I think it's something that you really should seriously consider, that's why we're putting forth this incentive program. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trusty Rockwell. Trusty Massick?
Thank you, Mr. President. All very good points, Trusty Rockwell. The problem I have with this, and it said, it wasn't meant as, as a derogatory term to use the word incentive. Some people might have the money, and, all right, I'll wait, I'll, I'll do it now because I'm getting, I'm getting half the. That, those are very good points, and it can help some, but it does nothing to, this is for sewer backflow. The people who live in the low-lying areas where the water comes up from the street or from their backyards, down their stairway, floods their basement, it doesn't address it. As I said, it's, to me, it's just so narrowly targeted, the whole village is paying a tax that only a few are going to get to. And I, as I said, that's why we want to help everybody. We don't have the money to do that if we can either have some kind of broad, I would rather put the whole fifty thousand or a hundred thousand in some other vacant thing that gives more to the greater good than a few, especially, as I said, we get, we get ten homes and the money's exhausted. That, that do overhead if it's smaller, you know, some of the backflow devices. I just think it's too narrowly targeted, not to mention if you, if you stop sewer overflow here and Mrs. Smith next door doesn't even have her half, that backflow is going somewhere. It's going in somebody else's basement. And we're now paying for our neighbor to help make my problem worse. I just, I would like to, I agree with Trusty Casera, in better financial times, where we could, we could put aside a hundred, you know, fifty or a hundred thousand dollars for these kind of things, I think would be a better idea. It just doesn't help enough people, a broader base of people. And so it doesn't, there's still going to be flooding coming in other areas that aren't backflow, that they will get no relief from this, yet they're going to pay the tax and they're still going to be facing this. In the areas on Barnsdale and Homestead, some of those are not all back, they're not all backflows. Mine, you know, mine never was. I had, I had water in my basement about every significant rain, and it was never a backup issue, so there's no relief for me. No, but as I said, again, I don't live in that house anymore, but I know stuff like, we're just not helping everybody, or everybody in the village who has flooding problems, we're just helping certain ones. I said, I know we can't do everything, but I'd like to see some kind of broader base relief that we're going to do this at all, not just so narrowly targeted. But they're all, they're all very good points, we're, we're all trying to our best, and unfortunately, as I said, my opinion falls on the side of helping more than as many as we can. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trusty Massick. Any other comments? Trusty Casera?
Just one quick comment, maybe we're, we're just, maybe I'm trying to get the, the press out here for our next, next meeting. We'll get that duly-wanted publicity. No, just kind of, we kind of summarize, and in pursuit of Trusty Rockwell's comments, I agree, it's a, it's a great program. I just think, given the current fiscal considerations, I think maybe we may have some questions answered in a couple of months based on some, some votes taken on in Springfield. So again, a, a great program, given our current fiscal uncertainty. And the, and the Trusty Sheehan's question, I wanted to be an opportunity that we say, you know, this is a, a program that we might want to keep on the front burner. It's a great funding source for, for this program or others, and after we get some more, some decisions made out of Springfield, it may be something we may want to reconsider. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trusty Casera. Trusty Zora?
Thank you. I, I'm torn, because I do think that Trusty Rockwell and staff did a great job with this, and it's a good idea, and it is needed, but I'm also concerned about the LGDF and, and any funds that we have that might be in access, maybe they should be, not holds for right now. That's my personal opinion. But I do think it's a great idea.
Just one comment, the, the revenue that we receive from the LGDF is relevant to the general fund, and these would be funds that come from the sewer fund, which can only be used for sewer related expenses, but LGDF money can be used for any kind of funding. I just want to make sure that, that distinction.
Trusty Rockwell?
I just, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say one last thing. I know it doesn't solve the problems and, and, you know, the whole problem, but I think what this approach does is, is chipping away. If it chips away the problem, and eventually we get to it, and we go past as far as residents who, you know, the number who would actually take advantage of it, but if this chips away the problem and eventually we can get it so that the houses that are being affected, then I think it's a good program, and we should, once again, go back to, to consider past that issue of the village and something that we should not take away. Thank you, Mr. President.
Trusty Massick?
Again, a good point by Trusty Rockwell. It, it chips away at the problem, and the, the problem is, we need to get the water out of the village, not, you know, and so what we need to do is put more money, which we don't have the money right now. We need bigger sewer, the more effective way of moving it out. This is just redistributing it. You know, if you keep, like I said, keep it out of one place, from a backflow, it's going somewhere else. It's, it's a good point, it's, it's help. Again, I, I could support the program in a better financial time, also to go to the LGDF, good point, but we may have less money to do combined sewer and, and general fund issues together. We may need that fifty or a hundred thousand dollars a portion of something else besides this, if the LGDF doesn't go our way. And we're going to try to make sure we can, it'd be hurt tomorrow, but, so that there's two other good issues, good ideas or perspective, different perspectives on it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Hi, Ricardo. Julie and I attended a water completion meeting in Farley, and we attended one a month ago, this is the follow. And some of the projects that are being advanced about are in Westchester, in Frank Park, in Bellwood, and Elmhurst, and they're multi-lane projects. And the reason being is that everybody's pouring their water into Salt Creek, and it's overflowing in all these communities. The Forest Reserve District was there, they're not really eager to help. They will help, but they're not eager to because they don't want to disturb the environment of Forest Reserve and change the ecology that's there now. So this is a big issue, and, and for us to get to a point where we're going to change our sewer systems and place it into Salt Creek, excuse me, please let me know if I'm wrong here. It is not going to happen at this point, because they're addressing what gets into Salt Creek right now, and the volume of water that's going in there from the upstream, that they're just as in capacity for us. Plus, we're looking at millions of dollars ourselves. Fifty thousand dollars will be able to, maybe twenty years to get enough to do anything that would be beneficial to changing Homestead in Monroe, for example, which really needs it. So I, I agree with the chip in that, I think that we're doing something. I don't think fifty thousand dollars is going to, especially in Julie's remarks, now that it was strictly for sewer projects, it has nothing to do with the LGDF. But to do nothing is not an option. Fifty thousand dollars, literally to humiliate enough funds who are there many, many years, people are still giving a problem. The sewer district, holding the, this kind of program that we're, we're putting into place, it's not getting rid of the water, it's just putting it somewhere else. And, and we may get people in here that's thinking, I don't think they're flooded, they're not going to have the disconnect and different from anywhere else. It's a problem, but we have nowhere to put it. We can't, we can't develop a pond, we have to take homes away, and we're not going to do that. Underground storage is not an option for us. Repention ponds not an option for us, but we have to do something. And this is part of the engineering capital projects from when we started four or five years ago and instituted all of this, and it's doing something. Minimalism may be, it's doing something. And now that I'm with Julie, that it's not going to, and we're in the LGDF, it's covering out.
But we do use sewer funds for, for other, for partial portions of, you know, not exactly, you know, sewer types of projects. Like, there's a portion of the streets that comes out of the sewer fund.
Like there's a portion of the street that comes out of the sewer plant because it's sewer-related in that way. So I just want to make sure that-
Wait, but it's, it's the LGDF that we've got, this month, Kim Ped, cutting this out?
These are enterprise, possibly-
Okay, sorry, I missed my piece. Are we in the hall of honor?
Trusty Messing?
No.
Trusty Rockwell?
Yes.
Trusty Sheehan?
Yes.
Trusty Casera?
No.
Trusty Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes three.
Okay, moving on. Trusty Rockwell, thank you. Is that all that we have?
Thank you, Mr. President. And it concludes my report and all the action items.
I do have one question, Trusty Rockwell. You were, you were motioning to-
Yes.
To put a separate table onto the budget. Is that going to be a permanent fixture in the budget now?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, other reports. Village clerk?
No report, Mr. President.
Village attorney?
No report, Mr. President.
Okay, moving on to my report. Motion to approve meeting and conference report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
And for the board. Appellations, standing committees and chairs. Everybody received this notice. There have been a couple changes since we, Trusty Zora has come on board. The one action I, that we're going to propose and I can't propose because it's not on the agenda, was to eliminate the whole of the garage community, which is really not in function anymore. So we will reserve that for another meeting. Thank you. So I present to you the standing committees and chairs. Any, any comments or discussion that I would be more in the clear of us. Well, thank you for all your support and every call you're making with you. And Trusty Zora, Robyn, your expertise would be very beneficial to our committees, so thank you. Okay, I have a couple proclamations to read. First one, National Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas, whereas medical services is a vital public service, whereas the access to quality which is very dramatically improves the survival and recovery of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Whereas the Village of the Grange Park provides a community-based EMS system, provides a voluntary, well-prepared, dedicated paramedics, emergency medical practitioners, fire fighters and police officers. Whereas the Village of the Grange Park EMS is ready to provide life-saving care to those who need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas Village of the Grange Park EMS responded to over 1,650 calls for assistance during the last calendar year. Whereas this team, this year's team is part of a larger campaign entitled EMS Strong, which conveys an incredibly powerful message about EMS profession and the honorable men and women who serve the county. Now we're calling that, proclaim that May 17th through the 2020, 2015 is recognized as National Emergency Medical Services Week. Next one, the Village Safety Month Day. Whereas our village is continuing efforts to address the preparation of safety and energy efficiency while the conservation and maintenance of the building environment that affects our citizens, hope they have a good life and becomes a national disaster if its capital, all structures are saved inside. Whereas happiness is achieved through the emotional building guardian for safety and environmental officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and all the new construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe destruction of buildings. Whereas these guardians station in the International Code Council, the government sends these policies that place together local state, federal officials and health authorities in the building environment to greatly implement the highest quality codes to protect Americans and the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, play. And whereas the International Code, the most widely adopted safety, energy and professional codes in the nation, are used by most of U.S. cities, counties and states, these modern buildings codes are also safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, floods and earthquakes. And where Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities' largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who are sharing us of safe and efficient and reliable buildings. And now we will proclaim the Village of the Grange Park of May 15th to May 2015 as Building Safety Month. And the next one is, watch out, the vice proclamation. Whereas safety is the highest priority for highways and streets of our city and state, whereas the great state of Illinois is proud to be nationally leading in motorcycle safety education and awareness. Whereas motorcycles, motorcycles are common and economical ways of transportation that reduces fuel consumption in roadwear and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion. Whereas it is especially important for the citizens of our city and state to aware motorcycles on the roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. Whereas the members of the Bay of Illinois are more committed to an education, continually promote motorcycle safety education and awareness in high school drivers' education programs and to the general public in our city and state presenting motorcycle awareness programs to over 1,000 participants in Illinois over the past four years. Whereas all motorcycles should join the Bay of Illinois and actively promoting the safe operation of motorcycles, as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, awareness and respect for the citizens of our city and state. Whereas motorcycles in Illinois are contributing extensive dollars to the United National Community Organization. And whereas during the month of May, all road, roadway users should unite in safe roadways within the Village of the Grange Park and throughout the great state of Illinois. Therefore, we pronounce May 2015 as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the Village of the Grange Park. And the last one is, Wear it, National Safe Voting Week. Recreation voting is finally enjoyable and we are fortunate that we have sufficient resources to accommodate the wide variety of pleasure voting demands. However, a lot of ways can implicate the fact that it places chaos and confusion, while being a marvelous source of preparation, voting for the upper pair can be a risky sport. That known for violating legislation and rules or the medical rules of the road, drinking alcohol, taking drugs or life-threatening abuse, or choosing not to wear a life jacket when doing so is clearly not the smart thing to do, are all examples of people here who are alive for proper judgment. One particular behavior that can reduce the number of voters who lose their lives by drawing each year by approximately 8% is the wearing of a life jacket. It is a simple task that has potential to reduce terrible loss in lives. Knowledge and skills are important in reducing human error and improving judgment. When people are aware of the risks, they are likely to take precautionary measures to protect themselves and their friends and family. That is why we must continue to spread the message of voting safety in all of the National Safe Voting Week, but also throughout the entire year. Whereas on the average, certain people buying each year a voter-related accident in the state is approximately 7% of these are death fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or judgment and not by the voter's judgment or environment factors. And whereas a significant number of voters who lose their lives by drowning today have worn their life jackets. And whereas today's life jackets are more comfortable, more attractive and more wearable than styles of years past and are driven by the threshold by today's voting public. Therefore, we proclaim the Grange Park May 16th through 22nd as National Safe Voting Week. One of the items, those of us that are going down Springfield tomorrow, if we save, we have a great meeting tomorrow, and next day or Friday, we can come back to you on Thursday, with some good information for the community. Public participation. Seeing none, ill business. Motion to move into executive session?
We move, we enter executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining in accordance with five ILCS, 120 slash 2C2, not to return to open session until our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
I mean, the whole goal?
Trusty Messing?
Yes.
Trusty Rockwell?
Yes.
Trusty Sheehan?
Yes.
Trusty Casera?
Yes.
Trusty Zora?